All right, it's September 21st, 2026 02:02 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. So the first item would be to adopt the agenda for tonight, so I'll need action on that. So I'd like to take a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as is.
A second.
All right, Cornelia?
Okay, Lapine?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Coach V?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Motion approved unanimously.
All right, so you know, I just, before we adopt the minutes, I want to make a quick statement as chairman, just to put some points in order here. I had watched the last executive meeting called to order for, I mean, the special called meeting while I was on a family trip and we had several members from our group. Thomas was dealing with issues down in Charleston with his family. Lisa had work and Stephen had some family issues too that he was dealing with. So we obviously couldn't get a quorum and I felt like there was people on that call that did not really, I think portray our commission on what we've really accomplished since 2017. May of 2017, this group, along with one other person came on this, on this journey. And you know, since that time, we're non-paid employees putting in our time and we know that we signed up for. But just to put things in perspective, we, in the month of May, for four months, had 13 meetings. And then in 2018, which Cornelia could look, but I'm sure that's a record, we had 39 meetings in one year. Okay, that's almost one a week. And you know, with holidays. And then 2019, we had 28. And thus far this year, we've had 16. And you know, if you look at the attendance of all of us, it's all very impressive. I mean, within 90% attendance rate. And so, you know, I had that, added that up. That's 96 total meetings over the last, almost 100 meetings, if you will, since May of 2017, at two hours of the, the meeting without, you know, some meetings were three and four hours, some were an hour and a half, but we also have to drive and get there. And so, you know, I venture to say that we have almost 300 hours each tied up over the last three and a half years. And I'm, I'm really proud of that, you know, and I think that our commission's come a long way. I think it's important for us all to understand that when we do have these meetings and/or in public, that we have to be aware that, you know, as a group, we cannot put up with verbal abuse of us or any employees. It's just, you know, on, on all these different issues that we've been dealing with. So we all have to make sure that we all keep an eye and keep things moving forward in a positive direction. And I think that we'll address later on, the bluff road issue. But you know, I'm, I'm proud of the way that we've handled it. And that's all I have to say. So with that said, I'd like to, you know, take a action to accept the minutes from the board meetings on July 20th, August 13th, August 17th, August 25th, September 11th, special called board meeting. And just so for clarification, we cannot vote on minutes at our special called meeting. So anyway, that's, we need to get that, those, those approved. So I'd like to get a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from these meetings.
Second.
Okay, Lapine?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Coach V?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Motion approved unanimously.
Okay, with that said, we have a public input for this meeting tonight. And so I'll kind of let Jamie and Cornelia run the input of that reminder that we have two minutes to speak and we're pretty, like to keep it to two minutes if we can. Thank you.
Thank you. For information, patrons were required to sign up via email, my email, cornelia@rcrc.state.sc.us by 3 o'clock PM today. Our first patron was Helen Bradley.
I'm on.
Okay.
Okay, okay. To the board, I want to commend you for the meetings that you attended. I too know what that's like because I've served on the board for five years as well. But to, to get to the people's sleep. I was told earlier today that it was decided that the adapted program would be moved from Bluff Road Park back to Park Lane. So I guess my question now is, when will the weight room be put back like it was? When will those walls come down so that they can have that space back? And like I said, it's just that the passion that I had with this park is because we fought so hard and we went lacking so long. And our parks were never up to the point, up until the recent years. So now that we've got those parts to that, we'd like to keep it that way. We always get in lower Richardson what no one else wants. And we're just fed up with that. And that's one of the reasons why we may come over a little strong, but that's the reason why. It's not that we, that it's anything against the adapted program. It's just that we want that community to have somewhere to go because we know the families in that community and the help that they need. So that was, that was the reason why we put up such a fight to try to get that park back to the community. So again, we'd like to thank you for what you've done to, to make that work for the citizens. And Ms. Brawley has, I spoke with her this morning. And this was before I got the call to say what you all were doing. We had asked for a response in writing. And if we could get that, we'd be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Okay, next we have Reverend Charles Epps.
Ms. Cornelia, I do not see Reverend Epps on the call. I'm looking for that number and I do not see him at this time.
Okay, well, we'll move to the next one. Dale Stigameyer.
Dale, you're on mute.
Yep. Thank you, Cornelia. And thank you Chairman Lapine for letting me speak for a few minutes. I too commend your service to our community. I'm a sitting member of the City of Columbia Planning Commission and have for a number of years. So I certainly understand the commitment that you are making on behalf of our public. The reason I wanted to have just a minute or two to speak is as a member of Richland County and a citizen of Columbia who uses the Jordan Memorial Boat Ramp at the end of Rosewood, or as many people know it, as Rosewood Landing. I just wanted to share with the commission that is an extremely valuable asset to our community to be able to engage our river system. I think it's one of the biggest secrets of our community that folks, once they get down to it, absolutely fall in love with our rivers, both for recreation and spending time with their family. But our boat ramp has fallen into incredible disrepair. I'm not sure how many of y'all have recently been to it, but it's not only a, a safety hazard with a number of potholes and cracks and and damage. It also is, it's a concern for property damages. People are taking their boats in and out of that water with large potholes. And so I don't think from an investment perspective, it would take a whole lot of money to get the boat ramp back to its top condition. But as it's been, I don't know that it's been attended to for many, many years and it's just fallen into disrepair. Given the social distancing COVID-19 environment that we're all living in, I think y'all could appreciate more opportunities like that to spread apart from one another and enjoy our community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stigameyer. Just real quick, just, because I know you might not be on for the entire call and it's something I've been looking into with Executive Director Watson. And just, and I, and I also talked to county council member today about that. And we're going to continue to do some work on it, but essentially it's a Richland County, we have a lease with them, but the county is responsible for the upkeep. And I think that there's probably over time, just been a lack of communication amongst the parties to figure out how it gets taken care of. But we're going to figure out the funding because I think, Mr. Stigameyer, when you called me, you made, it's one of the reasons I got on this board was, and probably one of the reasons that you're on the planning commission is that, you know, that, that bow ramp, even though you, people might say it's a little thing, but Mr. Stigameyer might have an important client that he's taken out fishing that could be bringing businesses to the community. And so when he goes to this, this ramp or whether it's a park, it's so important for us to have our facilities in good, good order and it will help commerce. And like I said, it's one of the reasons I got on this board is to make things better. And I really do appreciate you making this a focus. And we're going to have some answers for you on how we're going to get this fixed, whether it's the county or they give us the money. However, it's going to get done, we're going to figure it out. So I do appreciate you getting on the call.
Yeah, no, I certainly appreciate the opportunity. And you're right, it might seem like a small thing, but I think our, the opportunity for us to put our best foot forward, both for for business and for just personal enjoyment. There's a lot of folks that use that boat ramp to take their son or daughter down there fishing and that sort of thing. And I just think it has a lot of opportunities to make our community better.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Anybody else, Cornelia?
No, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. No, sir. That's it for public input.
Okay. All right. So the next is Alaska, Brandy James to get on our CFO to give the financial report.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Lapine. What I'll provide to you today is a brief overview or snapshot of our finances for the two months ended August 31st, 2020, for our general fund as well as our enterprise fund. I'm sorry. Did someone speak?
Thomas?
Okay. What you have before you on the screen currently is the general fund revenue and general fund expense comparisons for physical year 2021 versus 2020. For our general fund revenues, you'll see our administrative revenues are, have increased when compared to Can you hear, can you hear me now? Getting a little bit of feedback, I'm sorry. Can everybody hear me?
I can. Thomas, can you hear her?
Okay, start over. Commissioner Clark, can you hear me currently? Okay, so as I was stating, what you have before you on the screen is a comparison of our general fund revenues and expenses for the physical year 2021 versus 2020. As I stated, our administrative revenues have increased lightly. While obviously our program revenues have, are, have decreased. And I'll explain the increase in administrative revenues. That's primarily related to our property tax revenues that we received in July. In July, we received property tax revenues in the amount of approximately $579,000, which was a little bit higher than what we received last year. What we received last year was approximately $242,000. So that explains the increase in administrative revenue. I don't anticipate that for physical year 2021, that our property tax revenues will be higher than last year because of the 10% reduction that we discussed earlier in the year. For our general fund expenses, our overall expenses have decreased by approximately 15%. And those reductions are primarily related to reductions in salaries as it relates to part-time expenses. And also we've had a reduction in our program expenses. If there are no other questions, I'll move to our enterprise fund. For our enterprise fund, we are seeing increases in our overall revenue. And that is primarily related to increased participation at our Limerick Golf Course.
Brandy, are you talking?
I am. I was getting a little bit of feedback. That's why I stopped.
Okay. I think Mr. Clark is having problems. He can't hear you.
Everyone else hear me?
I think he's working on it, but.
Yes, I think I might need his device.
Okay, that's why, that's why I stopped because I wanted to make sure that he could hear me and I could get a little bit of feedback as I was talking. If it's okay, I'll move forward. Again, as I stated, our enterprise fund revenues have increased when compared to this time last year. We've seen an overall increase in our enterprise revenues of approximately 43%. And that's increases in our green fees, carts rentals, as well as our pro shopping concessions. Our overall expenses for our enterprise fund has also increased. And that's primarily driven by increased operating costs as well as repairs and maintenance expenses. Are there any questions on anything that I've shared today? If there are no further questions, that concludes.
Hold on a second. I've got, you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I was looking in the report that you sent us. And then I was just curious, like, so when there was nothing in the columns on the, on the Limerick, like budget remaining available?
Right, that's because we need to come back to you in October to approve the Limerick budget for physical year 2021. We did approve obviously, fund budget for 2021.
So then everything else, so like the, the, the page before, it's just like where it says program revenue, $2,431. Or that's $2,431, right?
Yeah, are you on the general fund?
Yeah, yeah, I went back a page. So.
Yeah. So what?
That, tell me that number again, real quick.
Sure. In that column on that first page that says physical year 2020 to 2021 budget, we have budgeted approximately $2.4 million in program revenue. We have, year to date, $824 of program revenue. What they, remaining available indicates that we have an additional $2.4 million in program revenue needed to get us to the $2.432 that we have budgeted for.
Gotcha. Yeah, I, I thought there was a missed typo there. I get it. I think that's for our board members, that's kind of a, you know, for everybody, I think if you guys look at that number, that kind of shows you where things are for us guys and girls. And it's a big deal. So anyway.
And as Brandy said in our previous meeting, and I'm sure she has no problem repeating, is that you will hear from us again, unfortunately, because we will need to come back probably between the next quarter, the first part of next quarter to discuss strategies in order to, for us to fill this gap. Am I correct, Brandy, based on your forecasting?
You are correct. In addition to that $2.4 million, we also budgeted for a certain grant and sponsorship revenues. So that gap is actually wider than $2.4. Those grants and sponsorship revenues are included in that administrative budgeted amount. So the, the total gap that we need to make up is, is a little over $3 million.
Did we get a response on the COVID funding?
We did get a response on the COVID funding. They did request canceled checks. So they denied our original request. We have submitted those canceled checks as of last week. In addition, they did deny our request to be refunding any refunds that we sent as it relates to COVID-19. So the $2,000 figure that I provided you has been lowered to approximately $70,000, $80,000, but I don't have that number right in front of me, but it is lower than what I originally quoted you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for me? If not, that concludes my report.
All right. So new business, we have a list of items to go for the auction. So I'm going to let Lakita start off with that, or Brandy or somebody talk about that. I know we, we voted on that every year, it seems like, but maybe you can refresh with, how that works for us and everything.
Yes, sir. This is in accordance with the agency policy for the the selling or at auction for the state auction of disposable equipment that we have as an agency. This list that you have is all inclusive of those items that we would like to have turned over to the state for the auction. The vehicles that are at the top are, just for your information, are all inoperable. So they're not vehicles that are actually driving or a part of our current fleet. So we are requesting that the board, with this motion, allow us to submit these items as is to the state for auction.
And then do we get the money back? Do we get the money back on the, like, when you sell that, that stuff, don't we get a percentage of it back or something or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Don Zeta. I'm sorry.
I was going to ask, are we going to replace any of these with new items?
It depends on which items.
Working to.
We prioritize our items based off of our current needs. And in our current inventory, we don't need these items. These items are not in the greatest of condition. So it is not that we are just passing on things, but we're removing things so that we can clear and make space for the actual equipment that we need. So there may be some, but not all, based on our day-to-day operations.
Could we sell this stuff on our own, Lakita? Like if we wouldn't have our own garage sale, if you will?
Not according to our policy. Our policy that we dispose of equipment via the state auction.
Okay, just.
He's trying.
Trying to make more money. Because I need a zero turn mower. I need a zero turn mower, Thomas. I could.
So that concludes the presentation of items. And what we are requesting, sir, is a motion from the board to allow us to move forward with the disposal of the list of items as submitted.
Like to make it.
Go ahead, move forward to sell the items to the state auction. That's listed.
We have a second?
Second.
Jermaine, second it.
Okay, Lapine?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Coach V?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Motion approved unanimously.
All right. Lakita, discussion on the Jordan Boat Ramp that we had heard from in our public input. Can you talk about that real quick? And then I do have a quick comment about that too, when you're done.
Yes, sir. While we were researching the Jordan Memorial Boat Ramp, as with several of our properties here within the agency, to identify ownership as well as expectations, we found that there was an agreement that should have been included in the board's packet, which we, RCRC, in conjunction with the Richland County, will maintain the facility. If you will look, it goes into section two of that attached agreement where funding, well, excuse me, where the providing of maintenance of the ramp, parking area, and other features of the site as required would be done by the county. With that being said, yes, we operate it. But unfortunately, we currently don't have the funding needed nor the in-house expertise to make the repair. However, Darian, if you will unmute yourself, Darian Austin is our agency's park superintendent. He is working with the county in identifying the best way for us to try to partner so we can maximize resources. So Darian, introduce you to the board. Many of you have not met Darian. Darian started in March. Darian?
Good evening, board. There are, Jordan Memorial Boat Ramp is, yes, it is in, in need of, of some repair. It drains issues as far as some of the wash is filling up some of the inlets and grates that are on site. The dam, the ramp going down to the water is, is also needed some repair. We can't do it in-house. We've looked at doing some things, but what we need to do requires some engineering and some services that we don't have and as far as equipment that's needed. So we have been in communication with Richland County Public Works to do some repairs to some other sites, parking lots. And we've also communicated to them the need for repair at Jordan Memorial Boat Ramp, even before we found this agreement. So now it's kind of solidifies the need for them to take the lead and handle making these repairs that are, that are needed for safety and as far as aesthetics.
And I'll be reaching out directly to the county administrator to get his assistance on the best mold, the best way to work through the county to get this accomplished. We also will talk about, later on in my report, have other meetings with the county to see how we can work better together to maximize fundings for our facilities.
I have a question. I was reading this agreement and on the last page it said, item number four, this agreement may be terminated by either party upon giving the other party a 30-day written notice of such termination. Is in any way we can terminate the ownership of that, according to this agreement?
Of course it is legal. However, I would recommend to the board that we do not, only because we as an agency have no other access to the rivers or the waterways for our citizens. But I do respect with the concern about the liability for fixing it. And it's something that the board can definitely entertain. How do we move forward if we're unable to identify funding?
Okay, I'd like to sell it. Give it back to them.
Lakita, I spoke, or to the group, I spoke to Councilwoman Tiricchio about this issue. She had reached out to me. And you know, kind of went through the scenario and she said, you know, that going, and I told her that you were going to go through administrator. And she advised to maybe go through whoever our liaison is. Unfortunately, Chip Jackson isn't in that position. And there'll be some other people that are going to be put into that place. But you know, I don't know how we do it, but I do think it's important for us to maintain and help get this accomplished. And she asked if we could take some pictures of the boat ramp.
I'm actually one out tomorrow, so I will have pictures. Staff and I are doing a site.
And if you can make a statement. And if you can make a statement, if you can make a statement about where we sit with it for her, you know, I think that she'll bring that up at their next meeting, but also like, i.e. that you're working with the administrator and whatnot, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for dealing with this, too. Appreciate it.
Give me Rob. Rob.
Yeah.
Rob, Mr. Jackson is deceased.
I know, that's why I said.
Make sure you know.
No, no, that's why I said he's no longer, yeah.
All right. Right. Okay.
Um, all right, so, um, I guess other, other business, um, you know, just I guess the comment is in-person board meetings, guy, uh, group, if we want to bring that up. Um, I, I had asked, uh, the council person, uh, Councilwoman Toricia, when they felt like they'd be going back as a county council into live board meetings, and she felt like it'd probably be after the first of the year when they bring in the new members. Um, my opinion is it's not time to, I, I, I hate these Zoom meetings for the record. I would love to do this, um, live and face-to-face so I could get a, a free, uh, dinner out of this. But with all that said, I think that we probably need to wait at least until the first of the year, um, for that. That's just my opinion. We have, um, five other commissioners here that can chime in on that.
I agree with you, Rob.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in the experience of time, why don't we just move on to the, um, executive director report?
Thank you, Chairman Lapine. Um, as indicated in an email that was sent out to the board, I have moved the four employees that work with Adaptive Recreation into the administrative building at Park Lane. This started on Friday and should be completed, um, before the end of this week. Uh, Ira Thomas, who is the district supervisor over the Lower Richland community, will be moving into the facility to assist us in rebuilding our connections with the citizens as well as establishing programs.
So, um, with that said, I've got a question. Um, just backing up, what exactly is the statement say that we're sending out to the public? Um, that, can, can you read it real quick if you have it there? If not, I understand.
I don't have a statement for the public.
Okay.
Because me moving staff is usually not a public statement. Unfortunately, yes, we have had these issues. Um, as I indicated in my email, I would prefer that the board give me the direction on what the expectation is, on how you want me to, uh, report back to the elected officials and those other individuals that were involved in this. So I will defer, uh, what is the best way to you guys?
Well, before, yeah, I, I do have an opinion and just, uh, I'm, you know, I'm okay with the decision right now, but I think that it's important that we reevaluate, reset, and look at the decision and, um, not commit to anything as of yet, other than you're pulling the employees out at this time. But we need to revisit and figure out where this group adaptive rec will work best, because it is so, so important for this group to be in a, a good, strong facility of the quality of a, a bluff road. And, you know, we need to figure out where we can put them and, you know, I look for my other commissioners' comments on this.
I have a comment. Um, I think we should, out of respect, uh, send a letter to Representative Brawley, because she sent us a letter and we reply her, and this should clarify some of the issues. I mean, and show transparency that we, we're doing what we said we would do. And also, uh, out of respect, since these people were on the call meeting, um, you should send everybody on that letter that Lakita wrote, uh, back to Brawley, Representative Brawley. She's certain, uh, since she included them in her first letter, and I'm sure they would like to know the outcome of the situation. I don't think we should just, uh, put it word of mouth. I think it should be in writing, and then that should be on record for everybody, and that would show transparency. So.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think that, uh, you know, we should put it in writing and all that. But however, I still also would like to say, hey, uh, that I, I, I'm, I'm excited about this, this, uh, collective decision that we've all made. Uh, thank you, uh, to our executive director for hearing, uh, you know, the people of the community and for hearing the, uh, the, the board, um, and taking that into consideration. We definitely appreciate you, uh, for working with us and, uh, you know, helping us to move forward, uh, all on the same things. You know, I didn't, I talked to Rob a, and, you know, what we talked about was making sure that, uh, you know, this was a joint thing, that, that not one side was, was being pushed or pulled or anything like that, that it was a joint collective thing. And I feel like this is something that we were able to do. So, uh, thank you so much for, for, for your leadership and everything and working with us, uh, to make sure that everybody's collectively happy. Um, so, but yeah, if we can get a, a letter from Rob, uh, you know, CC and some of us, uh, to, uh, Representative Brawley, um, uh, just to say, hey, you know, this is what we're going to be doing moving forward. Uh, and, and any decisions that are going forward, you know, we would love to have your input. Um, and, you know, so we can make sure that, you know, that we're moving in the right direction, just in your advice.
Okay, thank you. Lisa or Coach V, or Thomas, any comments?
Y'all see where I'm at?
Yeah.
Can y'all see me? Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Y'all see this playground? There's a series of four playgrounds behind me. Behind that is an elementary school, and in between me and them is a new area of park that's being laid down. On the other side, there's three brand-new fields, and behind that is a community center that has a preschool, and it has a library, it has a gymnasium for basketball, and it has all kinds of things. This is what a professional park system looks like, okay? It's run by professionals like our executive director, Lakita Watson. A professional park system does not work if you go to the community every single time you want to put up a wall. If you try to get public input every time you put up a wall, you see how many walls are in that building behind me? You see the kind of coordination it takes to get a school district, to get a park system, and to get a library to work together? If we go down a route where we ask the community, every time we put up a wall, we will hamstring our organization and set it back another twenty-five years, which is what has happened with the kind of public corruption we've had. And that's all I have to say about that.
Where is that park you're at?
This is in, uh, Chicago. I'm visiting some family.
Yeah, awesome. Yep, that's great. All right, Thomas or Lisa, um, you're welcome to say something, or we can move on with the report. Okay?
Well, I don't know where the public corruption came in at, but, um, I want to, uh, thank Lakita for being receptive and, uh, making some changes for right now. Uh, do I agree with anybody disrespecting, uh, being just, uh, just coming after her? I don't. She's our director. We need to, as a group, support her as one. We may not always agree with the decision that she makes, but she's still ours. So therefore, we need to stand as one. The board need to be a collective body to support the directive and which we give her to carry out. Now, if somebody's coming to the table and not being, wanting to be upfront in a professional manner, then I have an issue with that. And thank you, Lakita.
Oh, sir.
Thank you, Lakita. Hey, Thomas, I think just to clarify, Coach V in his comment is probably referring to what happened in the past when we replaced the board and just set us back and getting parks like that put into play. So I, I think that that's what he meant. If not, I guess he could come back on and say that, but I think that's what he meant.
That's exactly what I meant. I'm talking about previous, um, commissioners that we had on the board.
Okay. Okay.
There you go. Um, so.
Our last item, unless Lisa had something, I think this is where you were, Rob.
Yeah, Lisa's, it looks like she's just unmuted, so I'll let her speak.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, we can move on with the executive director's report.
Thank you. All right, strategic plan, Lakita.
All right, so this is the final item, uh, for my report and the final item of the regular session for today is the agency's strategic plan 2018, 2021. Uh, this is a compilation of the information that has been received from the Tingear Plan, the management audit that was conducted in 2017, uh, for and by the county. And then it also includes best practices as it relates to accreditation, which we are an accredited agency. Twenty twenty-one will be our year for our reaccreditation, and a strategic plan that has been adopted within the last five years of the previous accreditation, uh, needs to be adopted by the board. So here before you, and we were sent out to you for your consideration for your October meeting, is the agency's strategic plan, also included is information from our first retreat that we had in 2019. Uh, so the staff, I first would like to commend all the employees that worked hard as a team to develop these strategies. You'll see that the vision has shifted somewhat, um, instead of being just a lot of words. I believe that the words need to mean something that we all can build off from, and it's not to just lead the state, but to lead the nation in evidence-based recreational programming, safe and accessible facilities, and customer service excellence. Uh, so, um, I also like to thank the subcommittee that came up with the new vision, mission, and the staff that worked on the values. The values of the agency are extremely important to me. Um, I believe in all of these things. This is how I live. This is how I breathe, and it is a part of who we are becoming and a part of our new job descriptions as well. So there are twelve goals here, and I ask that the board, over the next thirty days, take time to go through this document. Feel free to email me any questions or concerns that you have about any initiatives that you don't see here, and together we can move forward with, right, during our, having our roadmap for the future of our agency through 2021. Uh, so that concludes the submission for your review of the agency's 2018, 2021 strategic plan, core values, vision, and mission.
So Lakita.
I'd like to add one thing. Um, I would like to ask that from now on, that the agency send the legislative Richland County delegation and the county members a copy of our agenda, because they might want to hear what we're doing in recreation. And that would help because we need to communicate with, uh, county council members, exec. Uh, so that is.
Just the agenda that we have, so they can tune into our meetings if they would like to. I'm sorry.
No, but I was sharing that that is more of an operational thing than a strategic initiative. And in the initiative, we do have to strengthen our partnerships with agencies as well as our state and local stakeholders. But if you are operationally requesting that Cornelia, who serves as the liaison for the board, to the staff and to the other boards, follow up and send, I, I think that that would be better done, not at this point during the strategic plan discussion, uh, but, uh, possibly a motion made at your next meeting. So then that will be transparent and on the agenda.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
She can just continue to send the, the notice to, uh, to delegation office with Kim.
Yes.
Also, yeah.
That's what I normally do anytime I have, um, information. And I'm not, is Kim in the office? Because I've been sending it to Kim, but I'm sure she checks her emails.
She's, she's checking her email.
Okay, great. That's how I get it to the delegation, Donzetta.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I knew, I knew it was supposed to go through her, but I didn't know if we, you know, did that.
Oh, okay. Yes, ma'am, I have.
On a monthly basis. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lakita, where are we at on the logo change?
Done. It is done. Um, at most of our facilities, you're getting new shirts. Cornelia has already gotten your, uh, sizes, and you'll also be getting your badges as well, because it's important to me that you are identified as you go out to the various facilities. We are truly excited about the new logo. Oh, another shout-out, my bad, Jamie, you and your squad. They did a beautiful job with not only getting this document done, but really working out in the community to help rebrand who we are. So you'll start seeing the signs at the various facilities starting to come down. We already have the new logo in the hallway, I mean, excuse me, in the foyer here in our main office. So slowly but steadily, Jamie is removing, and you will be seeing that.
Great job, great job.
So Lakita, what are, um, have you heard in your organization of, you know, the National Parks and Rec? Obviously, you know, we're not, we never had a chance to get, do our, um, board retreat. I didn't know if there was a chance to do, it's just, there is a little bit more time, it seems like. Um, and, you know, I don't, it'd probably be smarter to try to do it in December or November, maybe, to maybe just have a session, a work session, Zoom, where we go through the strategic plans.
Of course.
Um, as a board meeting or something, um, just so we're going into the new year.
Yes.
Um, rolling, and we can give you as many tools in your, your tool chest to make money and to provide for the citizens. And I know that we didn't have a chance to do that last year, so just, just an idea.
Yes, sir. I can coordinate and send something to you for your consideration, and you can poll the remainder of the board members. But I think that is a very good idea, is very important. The big work, that big picture work requires us to focus. And of course, we've had a lot of different things occurring around us that were out of our control, but for those things that we can control, I think that is important that I get that honest feedback from you, because this is the document, this is the roadmap that I'll be using for grants, uh, to go after sponsorships, to go after national tournaments, that they looked, they need to see that we have a plan. So, sir, I'll get some dates and things together, and Cornelia will try to coordinate a Zoom where we can go through the strategic plan and talk about big picture items.
Perfect. Um, with that said, is your, is your report complete?
Yes, sir. My report is complete.
All right, let's move this into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for attending. It's, uh, been on here.
We need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion for executive session.
Thomas, say second.
Second.
Thank you.
Lapine?
Lapine? Yes, ma'am.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Coach V?
How come it's not V? How come it's just not Clark?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Isn't it just Cotton?
Johnson?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Motion approved unanimously, unanimously to move in it to executive session to discuss personnel administrative matters.